Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me? Oh. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We don't have sound in the room. I assume they're running around working on that. Are we okay online or whatever with sound, guys? Because then they always say... Okay. Moving forward. I'm going to call on our honoree tonight, Ms. Lauren Stewart, to adjutant the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me? Oh. I don't think that's... Going to call the meeting to order. We don't have sound in the room. Assume they're running around working on that. Are we okay online or whatever with sound, guys? Are we... Because then they always say... Okay. Moving forward. I'm going to call on our honoree tonight, Ms. Lauren Stewart, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker Schuman and Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Bregge, report of closed session action.
Yes. The Board of Education considered the claim of I-0 of the Los Angeles Superior Court case 198 MCV 01075, served on the district on September 16th, 2019. The board voted five to zero to regret their claim. The Board of Education has also voted five to zero in favor of OAH case 2019060787.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bregge.
Reject, not regret. Oh. And that is reject, not regret. But we also regret it.
Okay. Ms. Krauthausen, any more cards come in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will start with comments from the public. Mr. Ellis?
I just wanted to take a moment to update the board and everybody on what's going on at Beverly Vista Middle School in terms of athletics. First of all, I would like to thank the board from the bottom of my heart for supporting our program financially with everything that you've done and the trust that you've put in myself and our staff to get this going. As of last week, we started, and it was very exciting to watch those young kids on the field for the first time play. Football team won two. The eighth grade team and the seventh grade team both won games last week. The girls volleyball teams did a great job, even though they haven't won yet. They're getting better as we speak. To date, we have 93 players playing flag football. We've got about 82 young ladies playing girls volleyball and 38 to 40 kids running cross country. So we've got over 200 kids invested in the program. And I think it's... And Kevin will probably attest that it's... I think it's really enhancing the middle school experience, what we hoped would happen with the middle school. Teachers are telling me kids are in class talking about their games, playing with their buddies, and that connection that we hoped would make the middle school strong and do very well. So I just wanted to thank you, give you a little update. On Thursday, October 3rd, at four o'clock and five o'clock, the flag football teams are going to be on display here at the high school. We're going to have a Beverly Vista Middle School night with back-to-back games, and Kevin and I are working to put that together, and they're going to sell spiritware and concessions and make it just a big deal, and we're really looking forward to that. So we'd like to invite you out to that. I'll send some more information out. But just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys for all that, your vision, and the fact that we're all working together, and it's coming together. So I want to take some time. And also, last Friday night at the Varsity Football Game, the Normans are down 20 to nothing with about eight minutes to go in the game. Battle back with about five minutes to go. Thomas there takes the ball and scores from about the eight-yard line after he had thrown about a 40-yard touchdown pass. We needed a two-point conversion to win. He gets to the line of scrimmage, sees the play that's called, decides he's going to take the ball himself, runs it in for a two-point conversion, and the Normans win 22 to 20. It was an absolutely amazing evening. The football team is two and two. The band was there, the cheerleaders. It was a great high school experience, and I think just to... My hat goes off to the players and the coaches for just their never-say-die attitude, and it was just... I think we're on the right track. So anyway, thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it. And any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer as we move on.
I just want to make a comment in that these kids are getting exposure and experience at the middle school level, and those teachers who coach at the high school are going to be the beneficiary of kids who have talent that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So I just wanted to point that out.
It was amazing, the first volleyball game, to see those 18 girls get off the bus with their coach, get onto the court, line up, and watch them play. And the funny thing was, a couple times when Coach Park put a couple girls in, they got on the court, and they were like an iron deer on a lawn. They were like, okay, now what do I do? It was just funny to watch them, their first experience in a real game, and just that growth. It was very heartwarming for me. So... But thank you. Yeah, it's going to be amazing.
How many teams are we fielding of volleyball?
Three of each. We've got a sixth-grade team, a seventh-grade team, and an eighth-grade team, volleyball and football. So there... We're getting a lot of kids playing time.
So if we have 18 girls, how does that... It's six players on the court?
Yeah, six players on the court.
For volleyball?
For volleyball. For all... We have a dedicated sixth-grade team, a dedicated seventh-grade team, and a dedicated eighth-grade team. The numbers are about the same. Seventh grade is probably a little higher than the eighth grade is right now. The sixth grade is got a lot of kids. But same with football. But in football, seven on seven. But they're rotating them in. Last night, they lost 25-23 and 25-21. All 17 girls that were there got to play extensively, so it's working out pretty well.
I am so incredibly happy to hear that. It's really important for all the kids to have an opportunity to get that on the court to build their skills.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for sharing.
Did you have something?
I just want to say that prior to this year, when our middle schoolers were scattered among four K through eight schools, none of this could have happened, none of it. And this is so important. And I just hope that people in the community hears this and understands what a great, great thing our reconfiguration is, and it's the same thing in academics. The advantages are similar in academics as they are in sports.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tim. Okay. Ethan Smith, six minutes, please.
We'll go Bulldogs. I got my... Right there. Well, good evening. This semester, the faculty of BHUSD have been given the option of using SchoolG. You've had some study sessions, and some teachers have said they like it, and I've heard many teachers that said they don't. Since there seemed to be some confusion on how well the faculty is taking to the new LMS, BHEA conducted a survey of our members to see just where teachers do stand on SchoolG, its effectiveness, and how well-trained they feel three months before it will be required of us to use it. We began by soliciting questions from our members. From that, we put together a questionnaire with 19 questions. We received 123 responses. I don't have time here tonight to go through all the questions, and I'll forward the results to all of you, but here are the highlights. When asked, "Are you currently using SchoolG as your primary method of grading and communicating with parents?", 68% said no. When asked, "Are you currently using SchoolG, or if you're currently using SchoolG, how does it compare to Jupiter in your opinion?", 78.4% said it was less user-friendly. When asked, "Do you understand how to sync SchoolG with Ares?", 64.5% said no. When asked, "If you have synced information from Ares and SchoolG, were your grades and percentages identical?", 42.3% said no, and only 14.1% said yes. And this could have significant ramifications as we go into report cards. When asked, "If you're currently using SchoolG, how does it compare to Jupiter in terms of time spent on the program in your opinion?", 82.1% said SchoolG is more time-consuming. When asked, "Do you currently use or expect to use the social networking aspect of SchoolG?", 80% of teachers said no. When asked, "Do you require technical support and assistance for SchoolG?", 78.3% said yes. When asked, "As you know, BHUSD has adopted SchoolG. In your opinion, should the district have done so?", 74.4% of teachers said no. And finally, when asked, "Do you feel you have received adequate training from BHUSD to learn how to use SchoolG effectively?", 86.7% said no. It is clear the adoption of SchoolG is not going well. We haven't been trained properly. We are unsure why we are changing to it, and collectively, 75 to 80% of us are not in favor of using it. If the district insists on using SchoolG, a radical change in the way this adoption is going must take place. I call on the board to either get rid of SchoolG, or at least give teachers the adequate time and training to use it to its fullest potential. Next, my understanding is that you will take some time to discuss the 2021 calendar before you vote on the tentative agreement approved by BHEA last week. But certainly, you're right. I want to encourage you to take your vote as soon as possible. The TA contains in it language which has been changed for reconfiguration issues that need to be in place for this year. Continued negotiations cannot begin until this TA, which has overwhelmingly been supported by the members of BHEA, has been voted on by you. We ask you to ratify the agreement and to let's all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kay?
I'm here also to shed a little light on teachers' point of view with regard to SchoolG. Last spring, when SchoolG was first presented to us, we were told that it would be optional, and we might be able to use the Ares Grade Book, which was in place before Jupiter was ever brought on, or we could use SchoolG. So I thought, great, I remember the Ares Grade Book, and I was able to use that very easily. I think that's what I'm going to choose to do. But during the summer, a full day of training was offered on SchoolG, and I chose to attend that full day at Horace Mann School. During the training, about halfway through, I came to the understanding that SchoolG wasn't a good fit for my particular needs as an instrumental music teacher, and I chose once again to opt into using Ares. And that was my plan until we went to the very first opening day at the Saban Theater, where Dr. Bregge spoke to the staff and said that it was an expectation that all staff would learn to use SchoolG. And I thought, okay, well, it's not optional. It is an expectation. So I opted back into SchoolG at the beginning of the year and have attended every single training offered. Last Thursday, I attended two trainings during our afternoon meetings. It is extremely laborious, extremely cumbersome, and not a very good fit. The time I am spending syncing and checking and working in SchoolG is time away from the planning that I would normally be doing to be working with students and giving them the best of me. And I just wanted to let you know from my point of view, I'm a team player. I'm not technophobic. I use a full technology-based program in my instrumental music classes and have been for about seven years, which is yet one more platform that I have to monitor and enter data in. I just wanted you to know that SchoolG has not been a comfortable, user-friendly, easy thing to do, and with all of the changes that we have all undertaken, I'm questioning, why did we do this now? Was it just another, let's rip the Band-Aid off and do it all at once? But I just want you to know that from a teacher's point of view, it feels forced. It feels like it's not really the most suitable thing. Perhaps one-size-fits-all doesn't fit all, and I just wanted to share that point of view with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kay. Just so everyone knows, the board is aware of what is going on and in conversations about this, and we are looking into the matter intensely sooner rather than later. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Dr. Bregge?
So we are very fortunate in our school district to be able to recognize that we have a Teacher of the Year for LA County, and at this time, I would like for Mr. Allen, the principal at Beverly Vista Middle School, to come up, and also Lauren Stewart, if you could please join him so that we can properly recognize you in front of our Board of Education.
So I... It is my great pleasure to introduce a teacher who's been in our district for 11 years, Ms. Lauren Stewart. Last Friday, we were at... We attended a banquet at the Universal City Hilton, during which Lauren was recognized as being one of 16 Los Angeles County Teachers of the Year. It is a huge honor, and we are so lucky to have her at our schools, our school at Beverly Vista Middle School. I... Just a little bit about Lauren. She has been a leader amongst her peers in the 11 years that she's been in the district. She has served as a department chair. She's been an active member of our instructional leadership team and our discipline team. She is also a school site lead for SchoolG and attended the SchoolG conference last year in Florida. She has a keen understanding of instruction and learning, and two years ago, her students, her eighth-grade students' CAPS scores were number two in the state of California, for the entire state of California. Her eighth graders came in number two, and that's pretty amazing. Lauren, you are a tribute to your profession, our profession, and we are so lucky to have you. Congratulations.
So before we leave, and I'm sure that our board members may want to chime in, but I want to tell just a quick story. So I was a bit mortified when we went on Friday to the banquet, and they don't know that I'm sharing this story, so I apologize for surprising you. But there were... You know, it's not often that you get a Teacher of the Year in your school district, and so Mr. Allen and I went. We sat at our nice table, and all the other school districts were... You know, they had these big bouquets of flowers for their teachers and had all kinds of... Some had signs. And it was Mr. Allen, myself, and Mrs. Stewart's husband all sitting there, three men, that brought absolutely nothing to recognize her. So I... It was a bit... I was mortified. In fact, there was somebody at our table that felt so bad for Lauren, and we were so embarrassed that she left our table and went to another table to get a flower to bring it back to her because she felt so bad for her. So I want to make it right, and so on behalf of Mr. Allen and the cabinet and the Board of Education, these flowers are for you, and congratulations.
You're so funny. Oh, you actually have flowers. This is so cute and very sweet. To be fair, the little flowers came from Lakota. I just didn't put mine on because I was wearing a very nice cable knit shirt, and I didn't want to stick it with a pin. That's why she brought one over. So that was not any sort of judgment on you, but this is very kind. Thank you so much.
Colleagues, would you like to?
This district is so lucky to have a Los Angeles County teacher here, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Well, we're honored. We're honored to be here to hear about this, and congratulations, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I agree. Congratulations. This is monumental achievement, and we're so proud to have you recognized this way. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lauren. Our students are the lucky ones in this district. They're the ones that are benefiting, and we are grateful that you are here to lead them on and teach them. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this excellent spotlight to our district on your behalf and your great, excellent work. And as Ms. Marcus just said, I think that the children are benefiting from your presence and from your excellence. So thank you so much for all your work. And I think I see a little ball, and it belongs to somebody over here.
Yep, that's mine.
So don't forget it.
I'll grab it. Thank you.
More importantly, don't slip on it.
Yes.
Have to reject that claim, too. So this and a football win has made this an incredible week in our district. Not that Kevin needed any more bragging rights over at BV, but keep fueling that fire. I'm just... I'm honored that we are getting to that level now as a district where we want to go, and that's... These are the beginning steps, so thank you for being a trailblazer in that particular department.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the excitement of a consent calendar. I have three items that colleagues have requested to pull, item C, F, and M. Just making sure we're not pulling anything else. Everybody? Going once? Going twice? Ms. Krauthausen? Ms. Kraus, how, I noticed that the certificated report was revised. Was it revised in time, or do I need to pull that and vote for the revised version?
I sent it to you today, but you can even pull it to make it.
No, I, I'm just saying, when was it actually revised?
Today.
Oh, so it needs to be pulled, okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay, so then I'm going to put the certificated, yeah. B1, so B1. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 9B1, 9C, 9F, and 9M.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Wonderful, consent carries. Good night, guys.
Thank you.
I know, see. I know, he's a, he's a big consent calendar junkie. He wanted to make sure we passed it, and then he can go home and do his homework. Thomas feels the same way, by the way. Okay, item 9B1, make a motion to approve the revised certificated report.
I second that.
Motion.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just what was the change, since I didn't get a chance? Is it just the last? The resignation?
Yes, it was the addition of a resignation in line 451.
Did you want me to wait? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 9C, which I pulled, but I'll make a motion for discussion, just to have a comment, make a motion to approve the PSA with rediscover center. Thank you very much. This is, I just wanted, before we voted on this, I wanted to say that this is part of a larger conversation that'll be happening later in the meeting regarding parity between our schools. This is one of those items that came up that will feed into that conversation. So we will approve it now because it's part of consent, but just to keep that in the back of everybody's head. So are there any other questions on this?
I think I made questions beforehand on all three of those items.
Right.
And so.
Right, and that'll all come part of the discussion. I don't want to drag the consent item down, but I just wanted to do that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion now to approve 9F, the PSA with Brian Baszalaskas.
My second.
Thank you very much. This is another item that relates to the discussion we're going to have regarding district and programming and parity. So I wanted to just bring that up as well, colleagues, that this will come back in the conversation, but we can vote on it now. So, any other questions? I know.
Just to comment, Brian was a teacher at Hawthorne with me when he filled in for one of our other teachers in math, and he was unbelievable. He uses a lot of technology, and the kids were really engaged, and the students that are going to get him for math in the lower grades are going to be very lucky.
Okay. Okay, I didn't want to just say that in the motion. I don't know if that would have flown, but thank you for the, I'll use it later in the conversation. If there's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. And item M, Mr. Marcus, you wanted to pull that. I'll make a motion to ratify the purchase order report, number five.
My second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marcus?
Yeah, this is, again, related to the US Bank expenses that I have hardly got the backup, and I thank the Office for getting that to me, was able to go through it. Again, I am interested in basically the amount of money that's being spent on conferences, travel, and related expenses to that. And again, I see, I got the backup on it and all, but I think we need, I know that the Finance Committee has been given the task of going through this and looking at this more carefully. These expenses, as I understand, in the last two years have almost doubled, and it's time that we really take a quick look at what's going on there. So that was my comment for that.
And I have had conversations with Mr. Roach as well about, and eventually, we are going to be getting some sort of policy coming back to us regarding these expenditures. So hopefully, sooner than later. But I know the Finance Committee is reviewing all that stuff.
Many of them are not on the budget, so that, you know, that's another problem that I have with it.
That's right. That's why we're asking for a policy on it.
The Finance Committee meeting is on Thursday, so we'll be talking about that.
Fabulous. This week, Thursday afternoon, correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That will do it for consent. Thank you, colleagues. Dr. Breggy, your report?
So it's been a couple of weeks since we met, but I attended a remarkable production in our Black Box Theater on our high school campus. It was the Drama Lab production for War at Home, The Reflections, and I was able to see that actually on September 11th, so that was a very moving tribute, and our students did an excellent job. It was really nice to see, there's a lot of fresh faces that have, are involved in our drama department and our classes, so that was great to see. We have some national merit semifinalists that Mrs. Hacker and I were able to spend some time with today at the high school and have some lunch and to recognize them. Over 1.5 million juniors in about 21,000 high schools entered this contest and this program. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of US high school seniors includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. And I just want to recognize these four individuals, Matthew Alana, Christina M., Diane Jung, and Matthew Park, and that's who we're able to spend some time with. We also have 13 commended students, which are our top 3% to 4% scorers in the country, so that's a national score. And congratulations to you, J.J. Gluckman, who's here today for that honor. We are, we started a conversation with the board a few weeks ago with our school spirit program, and so we are continuing to work on that. Mrs. Starkins and I are excited to be able to come back to the board with an update on our thoughts about direction for mascots, style guides, logos at our next board meeting. And then finally, in collaboration with the Beverly Hills Police Department, we are working with them with a tip line so that we can begin to start sharing information between the police department and our students and our administration. So we are going to be meeting with all of our site administrators and the police department in two weeks to start, starting to unfold what that would look like. And it extends our exposure to ensuring that if students at home or they're at school, that there is one place where students can text or call and provide us with any information if they feel unsafe. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Breggy. The board did have an update on ed services at a study session last week, and Mr. Seaman, who's not here, will be back in October to bring the community the highlights from that update, and I just wanted to add that. Okay? Mr. Cooperow?
Alrighty.
The winner.
Our hero.
So when I was in middle school, I remember going to Catalina and Yosemite and having an amazing time. Last week, the Beverly Vista sixth graders went to Astro Camp in Idyllwild, and I hope that everyone on the trip had a wonderful time. Also, Beverly Hills High School is working on a multicultural lunch day, tentatively planned for October 16th on Wednesday. There'll be all different types of foods for many different cultures. Additionally, that same week, Horace Mann is hosting a full week of multicultural days, so that'll be another multicultural week. This year, the district is obviously implementing a new learning management system, Schoology. I used Schoology last year in graphic design, so I just wanted to make myself available for all students if they have questions or need help. Any, anything really, but, you know, technology, I understand that with Schoology and Ares and Jupiter, they can need some help, so I am available. Lastly, as Mr. Ellis previously said, the football team won and improved their record to 2-2. This Friday, September 27th, is homecoming. BH, the high school, ASB, is hosting a tailgate at 5:30 PM before the game. There'll be a taco stand, games, festivities, and the outdoor upper basketball courts. This tailgate will be followed by a football game against Fireball High School, beginning at 7:00 PM. Along with the football game, there will be halftime performances from dance company, band cheer, as well as an announcement on homecoming court and royalty. We hope to see families from all grade levels, and the community as a whole at the game, so, and the tailgate.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, ed services, we have a public hearing, so... No, 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 I think I, we have the reading first and then the motion, and, thank you. The public hearing on sufficiency of instructional materials is now open at 5:31 PM. The governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District, in compliance with Ed Code Section 60119, is required to hold a public hearing on or before the eighth week of school that certify each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials in each subject area that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework adopted by the State Board of Education. We now invite members of the audience to address the Board of Education on the proposed resolution. No, it's a public hearing. It's okay.
Hi, just popping in, my name is J.J. Gluckman. I am currently a senior at Beverly Hills High School. I would just like to briefly say that, yes, I physically have all of the requisite textbooks I need, but I would also like to use this opportunity to inform the board of the fact that my economics textbook has census data from 2000 and includes a number of outdated facts, such as a complete lack of mentions of the 2008 recession. Also, minor thing, it refers to Dell as an up-and-coming computer company. I think that's grounds to replace the book immediately. Also, another minor thing, Jeff Bezos has hair in their photo of him. I would just like to alert the board to the fact that this book is almost as old as I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gluckman. I would have to say that in my almost eight years of being on the board, you are the first person to come up during a public hearing. Okay? So, congratulations. And now, in a few months, I will look like Jeff Bezos now. Okay. Good. The Board of Education has heard your comments, and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at 5:33 PM. Colleagues, can I get a motion, please, to adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution, to adopt the instructional materials programs for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, pupil textbook and instructional materials program, grades K to 12.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Dr. Breggy, if you can make a note for Mr. Seaman regarding the textbook, so we can actually bring that back, so, okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Onward and upward. Planning at Facilities.
I'm of approval of amendment number three to an agreement for DSA Inspector Record Services at Horace Mann School Building A.
My second.
Any questions? Mr. Pileman is here, if we have any concerns on this issue? My understanding is this is for closeout and conclusion services for the roofing project.
And Building A.
And Building A. Although, there's leftover closeout from the other...
Building A, it's the same permit number.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much for the clarification. It is for Building A and the roof projects at Horace Mann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, terrific. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Pileman, for being here. Thank you. Okay. Board policies. Motion 13A is the annual establishment of the inter-district permit cap. I have the language on this, so if my colleagues will indulge, I'll make the motion. So on item 13A, make a motion to maintain the inter-district permit cap for the 2019-2020 school year at zero.
I have a question on it.
I second.
I needed...
I second.
Thank you for the second. Okay, now questions.
Okay, in the paragraph, "The board may enter into an agreement with any other school district for a term not to exceed five years." Down below, it says, "The inter-district attendance permit shall not exceed a term of one year." Can you explain that, that the difference between one is five-year and one is one-year?
Can you tell me what you're looking at, please?
I'm looking at the inter-district attendance policy, Board Policy for Street 5117. Their first paragraph says, after the 51s, "The board may enter into an agreement with any other school district for a term not to exceed five years for the inter-district attendance of students for a resident." And then about one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, it said it shall not exceed a term of one year.
So when we receive students from other districts, we, we can accept them through the five-year period, usually that will get them through either middle school or high school, but we have a requirement, they renew annually. So we want them to come in and renew that permit annually. And as you know, as part of our JPA agreement, we only have two conditions, that we accept students as transfer students from other districts, either city employees or employees of the district. So, but that, that's why. So one is a regulation and one is our process.
Any other questions on that issue?
Yeah, I just want to, so we're not changing anything, correct? We're leaving everything as is, correct?
As is, yes.
And just, I had a question about the legacy permits, just wanted to, I guess we've talked about this in the past, I just can't remember when. Did we, does the district have, I mean, did, I, I was under the impression that legacy permits just graduated to the first point, and then they were terminated, but is the, was the, was the prior action taken from a prior board so that legacy would continue all the way to 12th grade? Can someone clarify that for me? I think I asked that question, but I...
So, and I did update on the folder...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that was the one question that we were still looking into. But the last that we looked at, it was in March of 2011, is when they, when they made the final decisions about the legacy permits, and that's why we're at seven now. I think it was two seniors, two juniors, and one sophomore.
So they do allow, I mean, they were allowed to grandfather all the way and make their way through 12th grade?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And there's just seven remaining.
Got it, thank you so much.
This will not include the, we're not talking about the administrator, but the AR right now.
No, we're just, we're just doing the cap, which is zero, which means we're allowing zero permits outside of what we're contractually obligated to. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Second item, I will make a motion, 13B, to approve the continuation of existing inter-district attendance permits pursuant to Board Policy and AR 5117 for the 2019-2020 school year.
My second.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this one?
I have a, wait for...
So, so just so everybody knows, I'm sorry, Ms. Marcus, everybody knows that the one we just voted on is zero because that's how many we're allowing in. This one is how many we're continuing that already are here.
I know, I'm talking about that right now.
Perfect.
I'm going to address that.
I just want to be clear to everybody on TV land.
Yeah, many, many years. Item 1A, children of school employees who have permits to attend district schools and participate in the school choice program based on spaceability, availability. I have always been an advocate, and everybody knows that, that students who have the permit to come to this, to our school district, if it's at all possible, should not be in a school where their parent teaches. And this gives them the flexibility to choose that school if it's available. And I, for one, have always felt that this puts a disadvantage on, puts pressure on the parents, the teachers, the kids, everybody that's involved. And I've always felt that that is something, if it can be avoided, should be avoided. And I know that from my experience with my students, my two children, when I was teaching here, I didn't even want the teachers in the other schools, and I had no choice, they were going to school here. I was nowhere near them. I didn't even want the teachers to know that I was a teacher in the district. They were on their own, just like every other kid in the school. And I still feel that way, and that's why I question this one item.
So, you and I alone, this was a discussion that the Board addressed the last year as well. Currently, with reconfiguration, that is a little less of an option. We are more so abiding by the guidance that the Board has given as far as keeping siblings together, but also when students enroll and when we are placing students, we're looking at space and availability. But, if this is something that the Board wishes we could revise, we could revise that and add that language and bring it back. But, this has been something that has been in practice for a little over a year.
I know, I'm very unpopular with the teachers with this statement.
Well, probably not the kids, 'cause my kids don't want to be at my school either.
Mine didn't either.
So, if the Board wants to give that direction, I have no problem revising that and bringing that back, but it's less of an issue just because we have...
I realize that now.
...less space with reconfiguration.
I think it can be solved simply, if, you know, by putting in something that says if space available, based on space available, and choice of K-5, because that's what we're talking about. So, obviously, it's not gonna, six through 12, it's not gonna be an issue. So, if that's a way to find it, to put that in the language, I think that would at least give us a little backbone in the policy.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that? Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. That one is, for the record books. Okay, Professional Official Business. Discussion on Board Policy on Equity of Programming in the K-5 Schools. Okay, colleagues, I, this can easily become a free-for-all, this conversation, so I want to keep this directed. Many times, we have items brought to us on the consent calendar that have PTA funding for specific educational programs at one school as opposed to another. This has been going on for many, 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 many years, this is not a new problem. Those programs have become site-specific, and I think, I put this item on the agenda, but I think we all are feeling the need to discuss this now, especially, and I'll read a response regarding one of these, I said this would come back to us, and here it is, but the mindfulness and yoga program at Horace Mann...
Bethelouskas and tinkering.
Mary Montague, right. So, it says Hawthorne PTA requested additional days to work with the TK through two students. The Horace Mann students have access, but not as many opportunities over the year, and they're spending some of their funding on the tinkering program, which is the Rediscover Program. Then, the other question, which was about that program, the Rediscover, the response was that Hawthorne PTA does not want to support this program, it's not part of their vision on supporting their students. Horace Mann PTA's vision is about maker space and supporting the tinkering process. Okay, that's fine and dandy, and I guess PTAs are absolutely allowed to fund what they want, but what we're hearing here is issues, and then we have this issue with Baz that came up, that he is going to be providing additional math support for Hawthorne, and that is directly related to curriculum. So, when you have a program like the Rediscover Program, which is the tinkering program, and they do have a maker space at Horace Mann, you can say, okay, well, they have a maker space at Hawthorne too, and they can utilize that maker space how you want to. But then, when they bring in somebody to augment the actual mathematics curriculum and work with kids, then, once again, now we're back in the situation that we've been decades' worth of the sites developing the curriculum support. And I, for one, have an issue with that. I don't think it provides, if we're trying to be a unified district, it does not provide students the same opportunities at all sites, which now is an impossibility at the middle school, because we solved that problem, but now the problem is continued with the elementary school. So, I want to hear my colleagues' feelings on this situation, and perhaps some suggestions on how we might want to tackle this, to make sure that we have parity in our programming, especially when it relates to core subjects. I'm not as concerned as much as the extracurricular subjects, I'm concerned as the core subjects. So, Thomas, we'll start down with you.
I mean, I express a similar feeling that you do. I remember in, you know, elementary school, that there were different programs, and El Verdadero had a theater program, and there was, there was not equitable programs throughout the whole schools, but, yeah, I mean, I expressed the same interest, but I was thinking, you mentioned that it's PTA, so is there a way that the PTA can work together, or we can combine just an elementary school PTA? I don't know if that's possible, but just throwing it out there.
Thank you, Thomas. Mr. Spitz?
Well, this is, this is a, this is a subject that I've brought up before, and has been of concern to me, and it seems to me that, and I agree with every, the way you expressed it, when it comes to augmenting core subjects, I think that students at each school should have the same, similar opportunities. And, so, I think that when something like this comes along, I think that staff can see that that's core subject mater, issue, and if it's going to be done at one school, I think it should be done at the other as well.
I agree with Mr. Spitz and with you, Mr. Margot, but I actually do think we'd need to take it a step further, 'cause when you're talking about poga, when you're talking about ballroom dancing, I think those are all opportunities we want all of our kids to have in those grades, and having it at one school and not at the other is one of the, it was one of the main reasons for reconfiguration, was to create equity. While I recognize that this conversation comes by the vehicle of PTA funding, I think we really need to be having a conversation about what it is we want to offer our kids and how best to do that. I don't know, I like Mr. Recupero's suggestion that, you know, perhaps we ought to pool funds. I think that actually would create a tremendous opportunity for parity and for parental involvement. I don't know if that's possible, if that's...
Not only is it possible, but it happens, it's called a BHEF. That's where the funds are pooled, so, I'll get to that.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know legally how we can restrict or what policy we can write in terms of what PTA funds can be used to pay for, but I believe it would behoove us for programs that are offered to the kids at one campus to be leveled out by another campus, and if that means more contributions need to go to P, to BHEF to make sure there's equity, then I think that's probably smart, you know? And maybe we need to talk about what are, what are the things that we're going to give approval for PTA funds to be spent on? If it's curriculum, if it's programs that directly impact the kids' experience on campus, then those are things that should remain under the purview of the district or of BHEF, so that there's equity, rather than, you know, creating an imbalance environment.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
I agree with both Mr. Spitz and Mrs. Schuman. That was the question that I brought up. I think all three of those questions were brought up by me, and my questions about why aren't they available at the other, or why are we not offering them at the other schools, so that everybody has an equal opportunity to... One of the problems, though, I see is the availability of people who could actually do these programs at all the schools, and therein lies your biggest problem. And I can go back to my own experience, where I did a special program with PTA funds for many, many years, and there was no other teacher that would do that, and so, it was just a matter of who's available. And that's another issue that you have to look into, is you not do it because you don't have both teachers, or you give one the value, at least you can give it to one, and that's something that can be considered also. But, I do think that every student, this is a unified school district, we should try to get the information, the classes that they get to be as unified as possible, if possible.
And I just want to respond to that, because when you look at the chart, and Dr. Berg, you'll talk about it in a second, is the ones that we contract out for, the PSAs, you know, the agreeing, professional services agreements, are not staff or non-staff-related, right? So, those are people that we're bringing in from the outside to work at one specific school, and when we do that for curricular activity, you know, core activity, that's, therein lies the inequity. Mrs. Hacker?
So, I think that before we start talking, I agree with everything that has been said, but I would just caution the Board that, you know, we have a PTA, and the PTA is a separate entity, and they're, you know, they're established by their own regulations, and they're motivated for different reasons, and they really are, they really fundraise for the purposes of supplementing education in this district. So, I think that there's an opportunity here to solidify our partnership with the PTA before we start talking about pooling funds, I'm not sure what that exactly means. Pulling, polling, you said?
Pulling.
Pulling, altogether. So, I think that, you know, we were to establish common goals for supplementing education, and I think that, you know, Dr. Berg and his team could be instrumental in doing that. For example, just today, I attended the Hawthorne PTA, and there was a lot of talk about the PBIS program, and so, if there was supposed, let's say that, once that rolls out, there was a need to supplement an act, through an activity or a field trip, I'm not sure, something, then maybe that would be an opportunity to have that conversation with both PTAs, Horace Mann and Hawthorne, to see, okay, here's a common goal, here's a common need that we've identified, would you be helpful in partnering with us to provide this service? And so, I think having both of those schools at the table and going through a set of common goals that would, you know, either supplement curriculum or activity that the district is pursuing, and also, maybe they can have a conversation about what they perceive to be a need without us at the table, but that it could be a balance between both of them, so that they are checking in with themselves and saying, okay, we're going to do a dance, you know, what is the name of that?
Ballroom.
The ballroom dancing. And both PTAs are in agreement that that is a goal with the principals at the table, and letting them, guide them through that discussion, because I really do hear that the PTA wants to provide services and funds, so that we enrich the experience of our students. And so, I think, I think we have a very friendly group in them, and I'm almost certain that they would want to be part of this if there was direction from the Board in establishing this type of partnership with them. BHEF, of course, I think for the, I think they already do that for us. I think BHEF already has, kind of, they have a role with us, where they sit at the table, and we discuss at the beginning of the school year what our needs are, and they take away from that and start from there. So, if BHEF has to be part of that conversation as well, then so be it, but I think that, for the purposes of this conversation, I would start with those two schools and see what drives, because, yes, you, I am concerned that one school does one thing, and then we hear from the parents about not happening at their school, and so, we often are here just approving and going through the motions of approving contracts, but we're not solving the issue of parity by doing this. So, I would suggest that that's where we start. Make a list of where our goals are. I think you have a list already, it's just guiding them, and then having them have a conversation about what they want to see supplemented.
Thank you. When I first got back to the district, and I was on the BVPTA, the mantra was constantly that the foundation does programming and people, and the PTA does things. And by things, I mean, you know, copy paper for the office and supplies for the classrooms and so on and so forth. That's morphed over the years, and now it's becoming where a PTA can actually vote and allocate funds for curricular support. That's, I have to say, I, it's absurd, because it's completely inequitable, and we can't look at a student in this school as a student of a specific school, we have to look at the student as a student of the district, and the district needs to do its job across the board, making sure that these things are available. I know that when I taught fourth grade, we had the school paid for, and I couldn't even remember, I believe it was the PTO at the time, but they paid for a specialist to come in and augment the math class, and come in once a week and deal, for the entire school, and it was extremely beneficial. Now, this was LA Unified, so I'm sure this person wasn't working in every LA Unified school, elementary school, but she did do several of them. I, and I would imagine that we, every, if a program is so wonderful, that the PTAs really want it, why would we think that one school should have it over another school, right? So, we, as a Board, can draw the line here. We have the power, we just exercised that power, and we voted to put Baz at Hawthorne and let him augment that education. But then, the question has to be, next year, when we see the results of the CASP scores and Hawthorne's math scores are higher than, I mean, are higher than Horace Mann, was that a result of this gentleman's efforts and work with those students? And if so, did we put those, knowingly, put those Horace Mann students at a disadvantage? We won't know until that time comes, but I wouldn't want to set myself up knowingly for that answer to be yes. So, we have to decide, as a Board, the PTAs can spend money on whatever they want, but we, it stops here, and we can approve and not approve, so we can come down with a mandate that says simply, if it's educational for the core subjects, it's everywhere, or it's not. And that's it.
But I think, just to respond to you, Mr. Margaret, and I'm not sure I'm disagreeing with you, I think that before we start voting against a contract, I think we need to allow the organizations to have a conversation amongst themselves to stipulate why they perceive this to be necessary or supplement, you know, why do they want to supplement with this particular contract? And maybe that will offer an opportunity for the other school to grab the idea and to also, you know, allocate some funds, so that they can also have a contract. But I think we're not, we, there has to be, they have to come up with a list of contracts, I think, before the school year begins, where it's Hawthorne and Horace Mann, and there's balance, and all down, you know, from the top, from the top to the bottom. Then, we can approve it, and if we see, if we see one area that's not, you know, balanced, we can question it and shoot it down, but I think before we do that, we should allow them to have an opportunity. I also wanted to say one more thing that you touched on. Sometimes, I think the principals feel that there's a need for their particular school. Am I not correct? And I know that Dustin's not here, because we could ask him that question, and I wonder if that's how some of these contracts come to the surface.
It is, and if I can just jump in, because I agree with what Mrs. Hacker said before. I think, you know, we haven't even started the conversation yet with our PTAs, and so, we have outstanding leadership there, and so, you know, we have a very open dialogue with our PTAs, and they have been amazing, the most amazing support I've ever seen in my career. So, we haven't even had that conversation with them, so I think that it's a reasonable one to have, and so, I know that they would be open and willing to have the conversation with us, find out what our needs are, why the needs need to be the way that they are, and I'd like to start there. But I'd also like to say that we have come a long way, because as Mr. Margot pointed out, when I first came here, we were paying for paper for the copy machines, and so, we, and that's why we have such a good relationship with our PTAs, because I think it was my first week here, they were asking questions like, why are we paying for Kleenex, and why are we paying for copy paper? And so, I think we've been able to clean it up, I think we've come a long way. And I also want to add, too, that, you know, our elementary school principals, Mrs. Kaber and Mr. Bugby, have been doing a great job of communicating with one another, because as we know, it's easier for two elementary schools to communicate, and so, they've done a great job of collaborating, and the cabinet takes us very seriously as well. We have readjusted the way that we have our leadership team meetings, in fact, tomorrow is one of those days where the cabinet meets just with the elementary school principals and assistant principals at one of the school sites. And so, everyone's there, however, from the elementary level. And so, the conversation of equity and having the same programs, you know, we have started that conversation with our principals. What you have in front of you is just the beginning, I know this is an ongoing conversation, so, and I don't like to give you things where you haven't had a chance to look at it, but it was, you know, asked the principals to do this very late, so I was able to pull this up just before our closed session, but this gives you a little bit of an idea, at first glance, at some of the programs that we have, some of the staffing that we need, whether it's a professional service agreement, what grade levels impacted, and this is, you know, just a draft, this is a first blush, if you will, and, but this is actually going to be a large part of our conversation when we're meeting, not only with the administration at Hawthorne... at Hawthorne and Horseman, but also then to start that conversation with our PTAs as well, because I think we need to let them in on, you know, kind of the need that we have and the desire that we have. And I can't imagine that they wouldn't be open to having a conversation with us.
Okay. So, and thank you for providing this, Dr. Bregge. I really do appreciate all of the work that the PTAs do. It's fantastic. And this is not even on them. I say this is more on us because we need to make sure that all the students are made whole. So that's why I'm bringing this up. It's not about, for me, the PTAs and what they can do. I mean, they're separate entities and they can actually spend their money however they want. It's not for us to say. What I just wanted to impress upon us is that if something comes down like this that directly relates to core education in a classroom, stuff that students will be tested on, and in fact, it talks about the state standards in the transmittal with Baz, then I just need to constantly ask that question about what are we doing for?
I agree.
Is every student going to be available to, or have this available to him or her? That's why we're having this conversation. So however, Ms. Kaber and Dr., I mean, Mr. Bugby worked this out, great. I'm glad. I'm not trying to get ahead of anything. I'm not trying to have the board stop all this. We voted for everything tonight. Okay? We supported everything tonight, but we just need to be wary of in the future as now that we've reconfigured, the issue is not an issue with six through 12 anymore. The issue is going to be a K5 issue.
Correct.
So just be mindful of the roles that we play in budgeting and education, policy, and the roles that those organizations play, just to make sure that every student gets an equal opportunity to learn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one additional thought. When, if and when PTA or any, or the principal or anybody comes up with a means of augmenting academics at a school, the parity that I'm looking for, I don't want parity by not permitting that. I don't want that.
No, you want parity by having it.
I want parity by adding the same thing to the other school.
Exactly.
And it can be done. It can be done, it could be done easily.
Exactly.
And that, I want to make that point.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Spitz, I absolutely agree with that. That's my main point.
I agree, and I want to make sure that it's clear because I'm not sure it was clear. I didn't say pulling funds, I said pooling funds. And I think it would be great if our PTAs from Horseman and Hawthorne can get together and have a conversation about what their common priorities are, because maybe they have more common ground than we think.
I think, I think this is a healthy, robust conversation that we should be having and hopefully, I think we've had the message clear and out there. So hopefully there can be kind of a semi oversight on how this goes down in the future so that we can make sure all the students are, like Mr. Spitz said, it's about giving all the students about the opportunities. It's not about taking opportunities away from people. So.
Understood.
Anything else, colleagues? Okay. Wonderful. Moving on to the hotbed issue of the evening. Thank you for those waiting. I hope we got to this quick enough. Batten down the hatches. Here we go. Calendar. So we are not voting on anything tonight. We are having a discussion. And in the past, my understanding is a lot of these discussions have been part of contract negotiations or something and have been held enclosed when calendars are discussed. And this board feels that a calendar is not a closed session item, it is a public item to talk about. So here we are tonight airing our laundry, clean or dirty. You guys can decide. So the basic gist of the calendar that we're looking at, Mr. Smith referred to, has school beginning on August 17th of 2020 and taking the biggest changes, I should say, to the calendar. School begins on August 17th, which is not really a big change because it's only a couple of days from where it began this year. Having two extra days off during Thanksgiving week so that we get all of Thanksgiving week off. And I noticed there was an extra day for winter break and an extra two days for spring break on both ends of spring break. So those are the biggest changes that we're going to talk about tonight and just so we have a frame of reference. So.
Five days later?
Going, well, it's, yes, because you're adding days off, so you're adding days to the end of the, yes. So it does add, it has graduation now on June 10th as opposed to, I think this year it's June 3rd or June?
Fourth.
Fourth, fourth. Okay. So here we go.
I just have like a quick question. I noticed that the 2020, 2021, there's two columns and the.
Wait, where do you look at? What, just, what are you referring to? Oh, you're looking at, okay. Yeah. That's just, this is something that Ms. Walker Schuman passed out for our perusal of.
Oh, got it.
Of data that she compiled.
Okay. And the calendar that's posted on the agenda is the BHEA CTA approved one?
This one, yes.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of that one, starting August 17th and ending.
You're going to be in college.
Yeah, but I have a sibling and, no.
Just got to keep you on your toes.
I would, I would like that one if I was going to school. How about that?
Yes. Yes. Duly noted. Mr. Spitz, what say ye?
This calendar that we're looking at features a week-long Thanksgiving recess, just three weeks before the long winter recess. I'm concerned that that would disrupt the learning process for many of our students. I'm concerned also that concentrating three one-day recesses in the week of Thanksgiving rather than spreading them throughout the school year is counter to the purpose of having one-day school recesses. And those two concerns are troubling enough. But my chief objection to this calendar is that the week-long Thanksgiving recess will increase the difference in semesters one and two to 17 weeks and 22 weeks. That difference, equivalent to a quarter semester, is unacceptable. Some AP and honors teachers have explained to me how detrimental that would be for their students. One of the arguments I've heard in favor of a week-long Thanksgiving recess is that absences are higher than normal during the three days before Thanksgiving, demonstrating that some families travel at that particular time. But the vast majority of families do not. So I think that is not a valid reason to shut down the schools and impact the academic program. Another argument I've heard in favor of a one-week Thanksgiving recess is that other districts do it. But other differences in our calendar, such as recesses for the Jewish High Holidays and the starting and ending dates of the school year and the date that semester one ends, those differences invalidate comparisons with other districts, as far as I'm concerned. So for all these reasons, if this particular calendar is presented to the board for approval, I must vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Ms. Walker Schuman?
Start by turning on my microphone. We will never be able to please everyone. We know that it's absolutely imperative that we review decisions and validate who these decisions serve and if they are having the intended consequences. As we look at the calendar for 2020, 2021, this is an opportunity to fix what we have heard for years is broken. It's an opportunity to fact-check all of the reasons we have been given over time for the changes and to demonstrate with data whether the decisions were effective or not. Balanced semesters. This is a fantasy. There is no requirement that semesters are balanced or equal. There is no rule, there is no law, and there is no policy. Adhering to the old way of doing things just for the sake of not making change is not sufficient. We owe it to our kids, families, and teachers to take a hard look at the decisions that were made in the past, the reasons they were made, and evaluate whether or not they've had the intended outcomes. The only difference is determining what content lands in which semester for the midterm in December versus a final in May or June. We are talking about a total shift of instructional days from first semester to second semester when you compare this year's calendar to the proposed calendar for 2020, 2021. This is a really important piece. You cannot measure this in weeks because we break weeks apart. So you have to look at the number of instructional days difference. There is only one single semester health class offered at Beverly Hills High School. Health. This is a class that we give in the summer and cover start to finish in two and a half weeks. I don't believe that a shift of seven days is going to negatively impact the curriculum being delivered of our health classes. The shift of a couple of days between first and second semester does not impair the curriculum. There are single semester electives offered at the middle school. These are optional. None of them meet the state prescribed requirement. None are in the category of world language or visual and performing arts, and three-quarters of them did not exist before this year. State testing. Our CASP dates are flexible. They cannot be given until 66% of the curriculum has been delivered, but they can be given up until the last day of school. Last year, we pushed them later into the second semester. We set these dates. They are not foist upon us. Testing shall not begin until the day of completion of 66% of the school's annual instructional days, and testing may continue up to and including the last day of school. We have the power to move state testing to a time that best agrees with the demands of our students and our district. AP testing. AP tests are given nationally in May every year nationwide. In 2020, there are, they are on May 4th, the first week, May 15th, the second week. This equates to 159 instructional days in this current school calendar year prior to AP testing. In 2021, they begin May 3rd and May 21st. The new calendar would provide 157 instructional days in the calendar prior to AP testing. We are talking about a difference of two days, not weeks, two days. Additionally, I've repeatedly heard that the schedule was changed to allow more time for students to digest the material and ensure increased success on the AP test. This has not been borne out in the data. If you look at the achievements of students on AP tests in Beverly Hills Unified since 2007, the numbers are flat. There has been no significant increase in this, for the schedule starting earlier in the year. And when you compare our data to schools that start later and have fewer total instruction days between school start and AP testing date, it is clear that the calendar is not the monumental vehicle of change that it was assumed to be. In addition, I've heard comments of, that it's a waste of time for kids in AP classes to be sitting around doing nothing between AP testing and finals. Let's be unambiguous. These kids have finals to prepare for. These kids are working their butts off, not only during the school year, but most of them are also studying materials for this class over the summer before classes begin. As a parent of a kid in four AP classes this year, I can tell you that these kids deserve a well-earned break. They still have to study for their finals like everyone else, and many AP teachers use this time as an opportunity to take their students outside the classroom to attend talks, museums, and institutions of higher learning. Correct? We should all support that. Thanksgiving break. For those of us who have been here a while, we're all painfully aware that the short Thanksgiving break not only makes travel more difficult because we have to travel immediately before the holiday, but it's also more expensive. The week of Thanksgiving, we see a huge spike in absent students, hundreds of students every year who are missing curriculum because they prioritize travel to see family for this holiday, which they should. And those who attend school, there's an overwhelming number of classrooms that show videos, play games, and have far less than academic curriculum on those days. I know it. I've lived it for 10 years with four kids in this district. As a trustee, I do not support our instructional minutes being used this way. A longer break gives families the ability to travel, not just among our parent community, but for many of our teachers and staff as well, and maintains the integrity of our instructional time in a far more effective way. All told, there are thousands of variations of calendars. What we are trying to accomplish here is to break the shackles of the way we've always done it in favor of more informed, data-driven decisions. I'm not sure what one-day school recesses were being referenced, so I'd like to ask that, if that could be pointed out. There are, I actually created what Thomas was referencing was a Excel spreadsheet that gives a comparison side-by-side to the school calendars of Santa Monica, Malibu, Manhattan Beach, Palos Verdes, LAUSD, Brentwood School, Harvard, Westlake, Boston Public Schools, New York City Public Schools, and then our calendar. I can, I can confirm a few misconceptions. LAUSD takes off the Jewish holidays.
Just one day.
I know that this is a surprise, not just one day. Both Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, they take them both off. I have the calendar if you want to look at it.
They only, I understand, but they don't take two days on Rosh Hashanah, just one.
But they observe both of the holidays. So they take two instead of three. They still observe the Jewish holidays.
When, I mean, obviously you have to, you have to say when they fall on school days.
When they fall, as do we. When they're on weekends, we don't take them off either.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. The claim that families do not travel here, I have seen zero evidence that that's accurate. With the exception of anecdotal observation, my family has traveled every Thanksgiving and I have chosen not to accompany them because my kids don't want to miss their classes. Because the kids that are in high school feel that it counts and they don't want to miss any of that instruction. Given the opportunity, I absolutely would be gone the entire week. So that, unless you have facts to back that up, a survey, some data, that's a non sequitur. That's, that's a feeling, not a fact. And the comparisons to other districts, what do we not have other than comparing what decisions other districts make and trying to measure the outcome of those decisions? Massachusetts is number one in the country. They're the number one state in the country for education. They start at Labor Day. They may do a lot of other things that are different. And we should ask the questions, what are those things? But you cannot tell me that it is detrimental to students in the highest achieving state in this country to start later in the year. That simply is not an accurate conclusion. So we have a lot of data to look at. I've compiled all of the AP test results, happy to share it and make it public for whomever would like to comment on it. But if we're not making these decisions based on data that we can measure, that we can look at and read and interpret, then we are not making proper decisions. And I support the calendar that CTA and BHEA voted on.
Thank you very much. A lot to digest, so we will continue. Mrs. Marcus?
I had made up a series of points to make regarding the calendar. Mr. Spitz has made some of them, so I won't repeat them. As a teacher, I do recall that I did not remember any teacher ever showing films on the first two days of the Thanksgiving week. I've never seen that and I, I don't know why. It's a blanket statement. There may be a few, but I don't know that it was all of them, as was said. Another thing is that as a teacher, many times after, and this with them still having finals, that's true, but when students finish their, you're adding five days to the beginning of the school year or taking it away and you're adding it to the end of the school year, you've actually taken away days that they could have in instruction and before the, at the school year's end. So from that standpoint, I'm not favorable to starting later in the year because I still feel that those five days should be before the, before the AP exams and other teaching time. During the vacation times of Thanksgiving and the winter break, if you total up the number of days, including the weekend, you get nine days around Thanksgiving and you get 20, 16 days around Christmas Vacation. So that's 25 days, right within a very short period of time. I'm wondering what that would look like. I'm wondering what that would look like if we, if we just didn't give it. And I personally think that these two vacations are too close together if we give them the whole week. That's just my opinion. I was given the thought of having, giving one day a vacation on Wednesday. That was one of the calendars that I had seen previously. I did not see that calendar, I did not, it was not presented, as I understand, to the BHEA. They only saw the one calendar, from what I understand. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I heard. The thing would be then they would have Monday and Tuesday to go to school, and then they would get Wednesday off. I personally don't even think that's a, a real answer to the problem, because as soon as you give away Wednesday, pretty soon you'll have the problem on Tuesday. So my idea is that you give an inch, and they may take a mile, and pretty soon you're really, what's the difference at that point? You might as well give them the whole week off.
We have Wednesday off this year. When, we have Wednesday off for Thanksgiving this year. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
We have that this? Oh, I did not see that. Okay, so that, let's see how that works out then, if that's the case. As for the uneven semesters, there was a teacher, two teachers that called me about semester classes, that was inferred that there's only one class, health. In the senior year, I believe that the students take an econ class and an American government class. If it's an AP class, they are blended together. But there are many students that don't take it as an AP, and they are definitely an econ semester class and an AP government class. So that leaves three classes that are really semester classes. This year, the high holidays, well luckily, they, or next year, they, this year, I think they fell only, there's only one day off. But every year, you never know what days the high holidays are going to fall unless you look at a Jewish calendar. So you can never know how the school year is gonna, what days those three days can impact you. And of course, you also have a few other days that many of the more religious students take off in addition. I guess the hardest thing for me to accept is the AP classes who are starting five days later and thus taking another few days at Thanksgiving, and then not having the, said the exams at, at the same time because they are mandated by the, by the United States, by the testing services. So I don't see an advantage to starting later, but rather starting and giving them those five days. One last comment about the AP classes in the states in the back east. We in our school district here in Beverly Hills allow any student who wants to take the AP class to take the AP class, whether they're qualified or not, and there's no restrictions to taking it. They can take it. But back in the east, we don't know what the qualifications and the restrictions might be for taking those exams. So I'm not happy comparing myself to states where I don't know what they are doing. So I, for that is also it. So, and, and one last thing that bothers me is that I know that the tentative agreement attached the calendar to it, and I would not be in favor of being, agreeing to the, with the calendar attached to it. I think it should be a separate issue, not attached to the tentative agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker.
Sure. So just, you know, I wanted to start off by saying that there is no right or wrong in, in whatever the outcome is, and I know we're not voting today, but, but I just want to say that I, I really do appreciate everyone's input and all the research that has gone into this. At the end of the day, I think, you know, we need to choose one way and move forward. But, you know, Mrs. Schuman, I, I just want to tell you that I really appreciate you, I'm gonna study this. I, I know that you passed out this, these documents to us just now, and so I, I look forward to studying them. But I, I do want to say that, yes, I agree with, Board member Schuman, Walker Schuman has said that there is no policy or rule around how we set the calendar. But I think that there is an ideal way that we want our structure to look like, and that, and for me, that would be balance. So I'm not going to be redundant by repeating some of the things that have already been repeated, but let me just start off by pointing out some things. So this is the first time that the board is looking or discussing these calendar, this calendar in open. And we're, we're gonna, I'm just gonna point out some facts. So there's a hundred and eighty days of instruction, however you want to split it. Historically, the district has had ten weeks of vacation in the summer. I think, I went as ba, I went as far as five years last night, and I think I only found one time where this district had eleven weeks of summer vacation. So I think that's really important to, to, to point out to anyone watching and to the five of us, because beyond eleven days or eleven, or, you know, beyond eleven weeks, I'm not sure it's, it's possible to manipulate a calendar and still wind up with a hundred and eighty days of instruction, holiday time, and, and everything else that's already in our, integrated into our calendar as, as we operate under this district. So for the first semester, just for this calendar that, that is attached to the agenda, the first semester I noticed only has one local holiday, one Jewish holiday, and that's September 7th. This is unlike prior years because in the past, there's always been three days of local holidays. So I think it's important to point that out, and in a minute, I'll explain why. I would also imagine that this is the other reason why in this calendar, in the, in the second semester, when we see a spring break, attached to the spring break, we have an additional Friday on March 26th, and then we have a complete week, which is not unusual, which has always been, you know, part of the calendar, from March 29th to April 2nd. And then we have an additional day off on Monday, April 5th. This is unusual, and I wanted to point out that I think, and I'm not sure, I'm assuming that this, these two days are because there was no Jewish holidays in the prior semester to, to hold on to, and so those were just carried over to the second semester, which makes sense if you were putting a calendar based on days off. Now, the school, the school year would end, based on what I'm looking at, on June 10th. So it's really important to consider this because I went and counted ten weeks from June 10th, and we would have to start school for 2021. If you were gonna have a ten-week off, we would have to start school on August 22nd. Now, if you wanted eleven weeks, then you'd push to August 29th. Now, why is that important to point out? Well, in that year, in 2021, we have three Jewish holidays in September. So you'd have to take, I want to point out that the second week of school would be, September 6th would be a, what is it, Memorial? Is it Memorial or Labor Day? Labor Day. The 7th would be Rosh Hashanah, and the 8th also. The following week, you would have another Jewish holiday on the 15th or the 16th, I'm not sure, one of those days. So why is this important? So now, if you have only three days in November, which is reasonable, I think, to consider and to continue based on this year's calendar, you would be left without any PD. I don't know what the PD would be. I, I can't tell you because we didn't get that far. Would be seventy-nine days of instruction, and then you would have the remaining a hundred and three days for the second semester. And then it presents another problem for the following year because now your graduation, if you decide to have eleven weeks on vacation for the summer, you're now going to start probably after Labor Day. And so then, your semester for the following year will be probably seventy-five days. So I think in the, in, in, you know, balance is important, and for the reasons already spoken about, that Mrs. Marcus spoke about in regards to the AP econom, I'm sorry, it's economics and AP government class, it presents a problem or a challenge. And I think our AP scores are pretty good in this district. I will stand by those anytime, and kudos to our teachers for providing such wonderful instruction, and I would hate to be the board that disrupts that. In fact, I remember that when I started as a parent in this district, and my kids were in elementary, there was a lot of talk from, from parents who had kids here in the high school, who would talk about how students, how they didn't appreciate their students going on winter vacation and carrying a backpack because a test was going to be provided the first day after coming back from winter break. And I think it was Mr. Margot who's been on this board the longest, and I think it was this board who voted, not Mr. Spitz, Mr. Margot, who moved away from that so that we could, we could have balance in our semesters. And so I applaud you, Mr. Margot, for taking that role and that vote a few years ago. I think we've, we're seeing benefits. I'm not ready to say that our, that Boston or Massachusetts has a better system. I think that we're comparing apples to oranges. And, you know, we have a reputation in this district for being a very serious district when it comes to APs, and I'm very proud of the work that we've so far achieved. And I'd like for us, of course, to make progress and, and more improvements, but I think that balance is the right way to start. So for now, I could not, if I were to vote on this, I would not be voting for this calendar for those reasons.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody had wonderfully thought-out comments tonight, so I'm gonna hopefully be on par with that. So, as far as beginning school on the 17th, I'm good with that. I don't think we should go later. I think we should kind of stick to that middle of the month. I think the first week is a little too much. So I, I, I do support that. And, and obviously, hearing my colleagues here, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of compromise before we can even respond as a board to this, because we are not in agreement on this right now. As I went through every day off and on and all that stuff, I had, I had some questions that I wrote down. Depending on how this plays out, I don't know about the extra two days off for Thanksgiving. It's gonna really depend on the balance of the both semesters. It would be nice in a fantasy world to be able to take that week off. You had, Mrs. Walker Schuman has provided us some excellent data on absences on those, those days that she, she was able to obtain the, the, and that la, in 2018, 2019, by the end of the three days through all of our schools, we had about roughly twenty-five percent of our district absent during the Thanksgiving week. So that's, that's a considerable amount of kids that are not, not around for, for education. Is it enough to change the whole practice? I don't know. But I would, I would be, I do like taking the Wednesday off. I'm definitely not gonna give that, I, I like that one off. The Monday and Tuesday, we may need those days in the first semester for, for a couple of reasons. Okay. Monday, January 4th. The 1st falls on Friday, New Year's Day. So New Year's Eve falls on a Thursday. So I wonder why the 4th is taken off. That's, that's an extra day in the second semester. That does not make any sense as a day off. And that, and by eliminating that as a day off, and if you guys follow my logic on this, you'll start bringing your end date sooner so that you don't have to push it later in the following August. Okay? So that day off, don't know why that's there. I, I, that one I don't subscribe to. Okay. Second thing is, January 27th is a professional development day. My only question is, why is a professional, professional development day on a Wednesday? That is very confusing when it comes to kids and families. Why would you pull them out, give them a day off in the middle of the week so they cannot enjoy an extended weekend if given the chance, especially during that month, which is possibly a ski season? So that's not the reason, I'm just an observation. So there's two professional development days, one on the 27th, one on April 14th, that fall on Wednesdays. I, maybe there's a rationale for it, not explained in what we were given, but it makes no sense to me to stop school midweek for kids and, and then come back and then go out again on a weekend. Just doesn't make sense.
Do you want me to answer that? Because I asked that question too.
Sure, if it's either a quick answer?
It is.
Okay.
That when professional development falls on a Monday or a Friday, that fewer teachers attend. That they put it on a Wednesday to try to force attendance.
So teachers would rather take the absence?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I still, I still think that, as a board, we want to do what's best for kids.
That's right.
Right? So, okay.
The word is professional. I don't disagree with you, and there are districts that don't do professional development during the year.
Exactly. So, thank you for the explanation. That's obviously theoretical and possibly true, but it's not a fact. It's not like, well, you know, you're not allowed to do professional development on a Friday. That's not the case. Okay. Moving on, February 8th, we have two days off for President's Day. I don't think we need two days off for President's Day. I know there were some, some, I was explaining that there were some contractual issues with one of our unions that take an extra day off. That day could be moved to the 18th of December, because if it's a pupil-free day, and it's just teachers doing grades mostly, it was why we give them that day, we should be able to take that, meet that contractual obligation on that day since there's no students here anyway. So I'd like to look at that day. Are you following me, everybody? That's three days I've given back to you now at the end of the school year.
That's OTBS.
What?
It's OTBS that has that.
I don't need to talk about who it is?
Not the teachers.
So I, I said it's a union, not a union.
Can I ask Luke a question? Isn't there, isn't it common to take two days and, isn't it President's Day and something else? President's Day? Isn't that common to take two days? And some districts take, some districts take a weekend, a longer weekend, traditionally Friday or Monday.
And if you look at the comparative chart?
Yeah.
It also, on the chart.
Some districts, I, I think Laker, I think Los Angeles, well, some people take the whole weekend, like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Yeah, there are districts that have shifted the second observance of President's Day to the Friday before, so it becomes a four-day weekend, which actually, I completely agree, that would be a much better solution. The reason that it hasn't happened is because of OTBS requiring that in their, in their contract language, which also presents another opportunity. That could be a professional development day for the teachers while the OTBS staff are not required to be there, which also would be a pupil-free day, but a professional development day nonetheless.
Well, that's, that's, obviously, that's for staff to decide that one. I'm not gonna dictate how they spend their professional development day. Okay, so that was, I think, two day, two, one, two days that I can get back in the second semester. March 26th is, a couple of people have pointed out, we have an incredibly long spring break on this calendar, an extra two days added to an already ten-day spring break. That's a lot of spring break. I know it's great to have that kind of time off, but very unnecessary, especially in the second semester, when we keep extending further into the summer and it's not necessary. So I would take off March 26th and April 5th and give that back to the school days, and so you can shorten the year some more. Now, like I said, April 14th has a professional development on a Friday. I would move it to Friday. I would like to look at those Wednesday professional developments, like I said. And if we do that, we can move the graduation from June 10th to June 4th, if we eliminate the four extra days that I've discussed, if we can do that. I think that would benefit everybody, everybody, because we're all still working the same amount of days anyway. We're teaching the same amount of days, and we're keeping the year short so we have more room in August to play with a start date. And I think that's really important, because we are not the only entity that exists over the summer. Our kids are beholden to other, other plans. There are, there are, our high school students go into pre-college programs all over the country and spend time in colleges. There are, we are subject to their dates. There are summer camps, we are subject to their dates. There is summer school, we are subject to those dates. There are a lot of things to consider, so the more wiggle room we have with beginning and end dates by taking a lot of these extemporaneous days off, I think it would help that situation. So that's, that's kind of my proposal now, and I think the thing that's, and I see a lot of agreement on those things with my colleagues about cutting those four extra days in the second semester to shorten and put graduation back on the 4th of June. The other thing I was gonna say is, so our disagreement right now from what I'm hearing colleagues is on the start date, there are some people that feel like we should start earlier. Am I getting that?
No.
No.
As long as you're putting back the days, you're putting back the five days somewhere before the testing by, that you took away, but they're being put back, I don't have an objection to that.
I'm.
Starting on the 7th, that you originally.
If APs are after April 5th, which I believe they are, then I am putting back four days.
I thought it was five, but that's all.
I, I got four out of this. I don't wanna, I'm not gonna embellish.
Okay. You're putting them back.
If, if it's agreed on, if it's agreed on. So, but we're, we're gonna have to at some point, and this will have to come back and give direction, I guess. I don't, you know, we're, we're not voting tonight, so we're kind of just letting ourselves be heard for the community and, and staff and everybody. And once again, this is a little uncharted territory for this board because we haven't discussed the calendar like this in open before. So, so then, are we in agreement on August 17th then? If, if.
I, I would say, Mr. Margot, that the best thing to do, I mean, I can, I can follow you, but I think that we should have, we should have in front, something in front of us so that there's total agreement and we can move forward. What I would suggest to you, though, is that everything that you say would then, by putting more time on the calendar, then would provide for eleven weeks of vacation. You wouldn't have that problem.
You'd start vacation on the 7th.
Yeah, and that, and if you wanted to start school on the 17th, that would give you eleven weeks of vacation, so it would be a So it would be a gain in the summer of break instead of 10 weeks that I was talking about originally. So you, by, by, by putting graduation a week back, you said June 4th, correct?
Yes.
And if you wanted to start on the 17th of school.
Of, of 2020, correct.
I believe that gives you 11 weeks of vacation.
Um, it, it gives, it depends on when you start school in 2021. That's, you can dictate that.
We can dictate that or not dictate that, but the point is you have to know how many weeks of vacation you wanna, you wanna have for that summer. And that will really much tell you. And, and historically, it's been 10 weeks in the last, I went as far as 2016, 15.
I don't think you've addressed the issue of the uneven balance in the semester.
But I think that that does.
Um, no, Mrs. Marcus, you, you are correct, and I, but the, the, ever since we went to this early start calendar, I mean, it's always been on, when we moved, excuse me, when we moved finals to before Christmas break, we made it uneven. It's always, when, once we did that, and, and I do, I will sincerely stay on that, I don't want finals after winter break.
Oh, that's terrible.
So we have to, so we have to do, so it's always been a little bit uneven. I know this proposed calendar is more uneven, but by adjusting a few days, we can kinda bring a little more balance back to it. Um, and, and I do, I did, I did receive the emails too from, from AP teachers that expressed the same concerns that you discussed. Um, but when you look at the overall calendar, um, especially the chart that, that Mrs. Walker Schuman made, we still have more days before the AP test than any other district. That's, that's.
This is really important.
And, and that's really tantamount to support the argument of preparing for the, for the AP test. We're still giving, and if days beforehand were the, were the metric of success, we should have the highest scores in the county.
That's exactly right. And that actually, that's the blue line at the bottom. We right now this year have 159 days between start date and when our AP testing is.
Right.
By contrast, Harvard Westlake has 144. Um, Brentwood School has 151. LAUSD has 150. Palos Verdes has 152. Manhattan Beach has 152. And Santa Monica Malibu has 153. So we are way more than any of these schools.
And if we didn't take those four days off that I said and move those around, would that add four days to 157 and give us?
As long as they were all before May 3rd, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we can, we can sketch out some, uh, samples of what we're talking about.
Would it be worthwhile to have a study session so that we can all talk about this? That folks could come and share their feelings also as we craft it?
Well, I think people have made their feelings pretty well-known. I think it's, it's out there.
I don't think they have publicly. They have, well, emails and comments.
This is on the, this was on the schedule for tonight and on the, our.
I announced it.
Well, there are a lot of people that can't.
Wonderful teachers are here.
That can't come at 5:00 PM on a Tuesday night.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just, I don't think we need a study session for this. I think this is, this is, we've heard the community, we've heard the teachers, we're taking everything into account. We've had very good points made here tonight. I think we can move, the only thing we're gonna, now we're gonna come down to is Thanksgiving. Okay? That, that's, that's gonna be, I think.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of a week on Thanksgiving.
The one piece that I, that I didn't review when I was, um, giving you my data, um, because social media is such an incredibly accurate source for taking measurements, um, I created a Facebook poll and there were 584 votes, 371 individual answers. The top three vote-getters were later start in August, late start date in September, and one week off for Thanksgiving.
Okay, so.
The other choices were longer spring break and no changes.
And I think, I, I think that's, it's, what's important to note about that is, in trying to work with our, our, our teachers, we have to find compromise, right?
Right.
So we have, so we have to find compromise. So, so hopefully, we can give, we can both give enough of each other of what we wanna see out of this to get there. Um, we may or may not wind up with a full week off for spring break at the end of that. Definitely take the Wednesday off. You've made statistical points about those Mondays and Tuesdays that have a, a percentage of the students that will not be at school, and, and we didn't even ask about how many teachers take that time off.
That's right.
You know, because I know subs, substitutes are very busy during that week and during the week before winter and spring break.
That's right.
So I do understand that. Um, I, I'm, I.
Can I make a suggestion?
You may.
Before we address the calendar, that we are given a sheet with this on it, so that we can look at it and study it before we do vote, uh, whatever that will be after it comes back from the, the BHEA and the, and then so on, so that we can really look at it and, and study it rather than, you know, like we just said, some of the changes you just made just now, which I, makes sense to me, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, but I'd like to see it.
I, I agree. This is not a voting item today.
No, I know that.
So don't worry about it.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask, we had given direction to have, um, input from, I believe it was PTA. Did that happen?
No, because we already, the calendar committee had already met.
Before that direction was given.
The calendar committee had already met and there were no other meetings scheduled after that.
Okay.
However, we, this, this calendar is coming to you very late. Um, and I know that, uh, Ms. Krausar is constantly taking calls and people walking in wanting to know about, uh, you know, very important dates when you're flying people in for graduation and things like that. So, um, you know, we would like to get started right away on the next two calendars. And, um, and we did hear what, um, you had said and some other board members about having a parent, and we don't disagree with that. Um, we just, um, we just haven't had that opportunity yet, but we'd like to jump on the next two calendars right away.
So I would like to just, um, see if it would be supported by my colleagues that I'd like staff to really look at, you know, 10-week, uh, summer break, with whatever you're gonna come back, you have to configure, you have to configure in there, um, a 10-week break and 11-week break and what that would look like for 2021 as far as a starting date, approximately. I know we're not voting on a 21, 22 school calendar. Did I say that right? Yeah. But I think it's important for us to get those dates right, including the Jewish holidays, just because that makes a difference. If you have three days and you're, you're, you're considering giving a week off in Thanksgiving, it could potentially make a difference as to when we would start the school year and, um, and when we would end it. So, and then that has consequences for the following year. So, um, definitely in favor of keeping it and hovering around 11, um, if we can accomplish that with the days that Mr. Margot has taken off or presented to us, but beyond that, I think it'd be very challenging to, to, to do any of this, um, you know, logistically. And I think I'd like to see what that looks like on, in paper.
Okay. Um, so, so we have a lot, what, the last thing I really wanna know before staff goes back and tries to present us with something with the changes that we've talked about or deals, uh, with the other parties involved is, um, Thanksgiving, um, cause I'm hearing that, I, I, I don't, I'm not hearing support for the whole week off for Thanksgiving.
That's right. I think we should look at the number of subs and the number of teachers that take that time off to travel. I think that's important, because that's expensive. That actually costs us money to pay for subs when teachers take off. So I think that's an important metric to have before we make any decision on that.
So we wanna add that data to the Thanksgiving question?
Yeah, in addition to which, maybe, but to compare it to what the average number of absent students are on any given day in, let's say, October.
Okay.
So that we can compare it to.
So the ran, versus, versus, okay, cause on any given day, you do have a percent of students absent.
Right. So let's, let's look at what.
But it's worse on, it's worse on Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, we're, I believe, we're all okay with Wednesday off.
No, I know, but this is the first year that we are doing that, I believe. And that may change the parents' thinking that, well, I get three days and it may, they'll put them in school for the first two days. So I mean, it could change the, the.
I, I, I absolutely see your point, Mrs. Marcus. Uh, I, I wanna dive into some of the data about subs, but I think we should, yeah, it's a tough one, because it's an ask that's being presented to us. Um, it's, I think it's the major sticking point right now with this board.
I think, I think you should continue down the road of polling the board right now, if there is support for five days on Thanksgiving week or three. And then, then, and then, because I think the majority right now already.
Well, the majority is three. I, I don't have to poll the board. I've listened to everybody.
Yeah, but I, okay, so I think that, that that's what we should give direction in coming back with the calendar. Also, you know, I remember Mr. Jackson once stating that there was a, a holiday, and I can't remember if it was the first semester or second semester, where a lot of students are absent. And I'd like to know that data. I actually emailed, um, Mrs. Schaefer, cause I think she would be the one to poll that information from the database, and I didn't hear back from her, cause I know she's at a conference. But I'd like to see, is there another day, just, just, I really would like to see, is there another day in the calendar where students are absent? Uh, I do recall Mr. Jackson pointing out that there was one day that was much more, um, there was more absentism compared to Thanksgiving. Do you know that?
Also, I mean, the Persian holiday.
Do you know that, that answer already, Luke?
If, if I remember correctly, it was, um, Coachella weekend. And it, and it's probably merely at the high school.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, I think that the families would rather have time off to think of it, than for Coachella.
You have to think about it.
Just gonna go out on a limb there.
And to Ms. Schaefer's credit, even though she is away, she did provide that information to me that I, I did get today. Um, she wasn't sure and I wasn't sure exactly what the request was behind it, but now that I have a little bit more information, um, we'll look to see if there's any one certain day that, um, you know, and maybe it was Coachella.
Because maybe if, if there's a, if that is true, if there is such a day and we can make that a professional development day, then we solved something.
Definitely a Friday. Although then you do rob some of the teachers, some of the hip teachers that wanna go to Coachella.
The calendar.
You robbed them of the opportunity. Um, okay, so here's, so here's what I'm gonna repeat, so we're clear on possible direction here, okay?
That, that would be fantastic.
If, only stop me if you disagree, colleagues, okay? Um, we're okay with August 17th as a start date for now, okay? Um, we would like to, um, look, look at just two-day, uh, I'm sorry, uh, three-day Thanksgiving holiday week, not a five-day. Um, the, we, we would like to possibly utilize December 18th as that OTBS day off, so we don't have to do it on a second President's Day weekend. Uh, yeah, uh, the February 8th one, I believe.
And, and just to be specific.
If that can happen.
So that that would be a day off for everyone. Is that what you mean?
It would be professional development for the teachers.
No, it's professional development day, but it's also, it could be their day off. Oh, their day off, okay. So, cause the teachers needed.
Okay.
Okay. Got it.
So the days off that none of us are, are in agreement with in the second semester are January 4th, February 8th, March 26th, am I going too fast?
March 26th.
And April 5th. Okay? Okay? Try to move the professional development days to Fridays or Mondays, I guess, but.
Or that holiday that we spoke about.
Or, if it's, if it falls on either of those days.
Oh, wait.
And then, and then, um, that way we can end school. We have graduation on June 4th is my goal, okay? And that way 10 weeks will take us to August 16th, 2021 is a start date. Okay? And I think that would kind of keep, we can work on keeping the start date the best we can, and I actually looked at three years out, if we kinda shoot for that, then we never have to start school before the 15th of August. So it'll go the 16th and then the 15th, and then it resets back to like the 20th or something, cause there's more weeks in August at that point. So I think that would be great and, and that we can keep some continuity, keep the 10-week vacation and keep all that. Colleagues, are we good with that direction?
We're good, to me.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Um, I know that, that had, Tristan, if your legs were longer, you'd be kicking me under the table for the Thanksgiving thing, but.
The only comment that I have is, I really wanna thank everyone who came out to talk about how much they supported this calendar after knocking down my door, beating down my door about how important this is. Thank you for showing up, because this is what happens when you don't.
Right. Well, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot in this calendar though, and I give, I give the union credit in addressing issues that I've had with the past calendars.
Yes, they did a great job.
I've always agreed with starting school earlier. I thought we were starting too early.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that we addressed that, and that's a big issue, and I'm glad that we addressed that. Um, and I'm glad, glad that we had, have finally added an extra day to Thanksgiving week. Just taking off for Thanksgiving, the actual day itself is very difficult. It's difficult on a lot of people, so, um, a lot of people do have travel plans. Plus, the other thing that, that I had spoken to my colleague about prior to this meeting was to look at spring break, scheduling spring break as an opportunity for students to visit colleges that they have been accepted to. And our spring breaks have traditionally been too early for that to happen. This one isn't. It allows a few days after April, because most decisions are, are, um, most colleges get back by the end of March, you know? So it gives you a few days to plan a trip. Now in the future, hopefully, we can kind of keep that in mind. That is something to service our students, which we've never looked at before, and it took, it took, I guess, until a different generation with kids going to college to realize, boy, this really stinks. It would be nice if spring break was a week later, there's no reason why it can't be, so that all of our kids can actually go visit the schools that they're thinking about going to once they have been accepted.
It also aligns with, with, uh, Easter and Passover.
This time.
Sometimes it doesn't, sometimes.
Well, in this calendar, it does.
Absolutely. Um, yes, Mr. Pavoni, you wanted to add something?
Yes, just briefly, I just wanted to let the board know that in your inbox for your review this evening, I already sent you a calendar titled, um, Calendar Option 8, that, um, the calendar committee did come up with, and it addresses a lot of your concerns. It has the, um, August 17th start date, it has three days at Thanksgiving, and an end date of June 4th. Um, it addresses.
Look how good I am. Look at that.
It addresses two of your four days, um, that you would not like off, but the other two days around there, but it still has that 17th start date, a June 4th, and only three days at Thanksgiving, so you can review that this evening.
Fabulous. I was, although I can guarantee you, none of us are going back to the office this evening from here. Right, right. Then I really wanna thank the calendar committee for telepathically hearing our concerns, obviously, before we even got to it. So that is terrific. I won't belabor the point. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to those who attended this evening for this robust conversation, doing the work, the good work of this community. So with that, I'll go to board comments.
I hope to see everybody at homecoming on Friday.
Good luck to our team on Friday.
Congratulations again to Mrs. Stewart for her award. I am thrilled that the kids had such a great time at Astro Camp, the sixth graders at BV Middle School, and I still don't agree that we should have a shorter Thanksgiving.
Never say that.
It's not in my nature.
I noticed. I just wanna just thank everybody for the brisk discussion that we had about the calendar, and how we really did come to some conclusions and some agreements on things, and to show that we are listening and we are able to work together. And I think that that was something that showed tonight, for, that I was really appreciative of. And I wanna thank everybody for being here. I hope they're watching on television.
Yes, I just, I just wanna say, good luck for homecoming. I think we should all try to be there. I think it's gonna be great. Thank you to the board for a lively discussion today. I think it was one of the best discussions we've had, and I just really thank all of you for all of your insight and perspective, and I'm, I look forward to seeing what Luke provides for us, and I'm sure we're going to agree, I think.
Thank you, everybody. The, I wanna just, once again, well, first of all, go Normans on Friday.